All right, thank you STLTV. Pardon me, the board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Igrosia.
Present.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Present.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cole.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Grass.
Present.
President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Calder.
Present.
I'm sorry, who was that?
I believe that was Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Peel.
Present.
President Reed. Twenty-four present, you have form.
Thank you, Sharita. With all members being present.
I'm sorry, Bosley is here.
Okay.
So noted.
All right. Thank you again, Sharita. With all members present, we will bow our heads, take a moment for prayer. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. All right, thank you. We have announcements. I believe we have Alderwoman Boyd from the twenty-seventh. Do you have Resolution Thirty-seven, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Ms. Clerk, could you read their resolution for us, please?
Well, one second. We will, we will, just making sure that was on, because on my notes here, let's.
Okay.
Work with me today.
Yeah, work with me, box me through.
With this resolution being presented, we'll suspend our regular business and take up our courtesy rest exclusive calendar. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, would you make a motion to adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar?
I move that we adopt that courtesy resolutions calendar for today's meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we approve our courtesy resolutions calendar. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, please proceed.
I'm on point now, right?
Yes, you are.
Ms. Clerk, could you read the resolution for me, please?
Sure. Resolution Thirty-seven, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen recognized June third, two thousand and twenty-two as National Gun Violence Awareness Day to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than a hundred Americans are killed by gun violence and on average, there are more than thirteen thousand gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are twenty-five times more likely to die by gun violence than people in other high-income countries. And whereas gun homicides predominantly occur in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in a hundred and twenty-seven cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including St. Louis, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas the pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and has led to situations where excessive firearms resulted in increased risk and intimate, I'm sorry, intimate partner gun violence, deaths, suicide by gun, and unintentional shootings. Whereas in January two thousand and thirteen, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inauguration inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should be now celebrating her twenty-third birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiya and the more and more than a hundred Americans whose lives were cut short every day, the countless survivors are injured by shootings every day. A national coalition of organizations has designated June fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when in the woods and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June fourth, the first Friday in June in two thousand and twenty-one to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing June, I'm sorry, by wearing orange on June third, two thousand and twenty-two, Americans will raise awareness by gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to all we can do to keep firearms out the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize June third as National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. We further direct the clerk of the Board of Aldermen to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this third day of June, two thousand and twenty-two, by the honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the Board of Aldermen, and the following other persons. Pamela Boyd, twenty-seventh ward, Alderwoman. Kara Spencer, twentieth ward, Alderwoman. Marlene Davis, nineteenth ward, Alderwoman. Carol Howard, fourteenth ward, Alderwoman. Joe Bacaro, twenty-third ward, Aldermen. Shemene Clark Hubbard, twenty-sixth ward, Alderwoman. Thomas Odenberg, sixteenth ward, Aldermen. Joe Savalmer, tenth ward, Aldermen. And Dan Gutford, ninth ward, Aldermen. Adopted this third day of June as attested.
All right, thank you very much, Sharita. Alderwoman Boyd, please proceed.
This, I'm making sure my things, this resolution means a lot to me because we have been working hard to bring attention to the gun violence within our community. We have had an accelerated amount of children that have been killed and with this gun, with the guns that's out here on the street. And so I am honored to present this resolution. We have Moms Demand Action here today. Gail, is Gail still here? Because I know she was.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. Sorry, my webcam is not available today, but I am wearing orange and I'm here. So, thank you. Yeah.
So, did you want to say something, Gail?
Yes, I would love to. Thank you so much. I may repeat a few things in the resolution, but I'm happy to be here on behalf of Moms Demand Action. So, as was mentioned, on January twenty-first of two thousand and thirteen, Hadiya Pendleton marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and she was shot and killed one week later in a playground in Chicago. And her friends decided to commemorate her life by wearing orange, the color hunters wear in the woods to protect themselves and others. And the first wear orange was on June second, two thousand and fifteen, which would have been Hadiya's eighteenth birthday. And since then, these years and past years, we look to the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. On behalf of the Missouri Chapter of Moms Demand Action Prevention in America, I thank the St. Louis Board of Aldermen for once again approving this proclamation for wear orange. Every day in the U.S., over a hundred and ten people are killed due to gun violence. And this includes homicides, suicides, and unintentional shootings. This affects cities, towns, and rural areas. Missouri has the fifth highest rate of gun deaths of any state in the U.S. And the rate of gun deaths in Missouri has increased seventy percent from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty. It really will take an entire toolkit of different efforts to get to the roots of this problem and turn this situation around. Whether it's working to get better gun laws passed, increasing the use of violence interruption programs, or educating families about the true storage of firearms to stop unintentional shootings of children and by children, there are many things we can do to honor the memories of those lost to gun violence and to reduce gun deaths and injuries. So again, thank you for recognizing this day and for your support of programs and initiatives that work to reduce gun violence. I also do want to say, we'd love for any and all of you to join us. There will be a rally tomorrow at two P.M. at Tina Plaza. We'll have some community leaders, faith leaders, and survivors speaking in honor of wear orange and we'll give you concrete things you can do to try to get our laws changed. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I turn it back over to the board.
Okay, thank you very much. I see we have some hands up. Pardon me, my screen is a little small. We will go as I see them, because I didn't see who came up first, if that's all right with everyone. Alderwoman Howard, you have your hand up.
Yes, I did. I would like to thank Ms. Wexler for sponsoring this and Alderman Boyd for bringing it, Alderwoman Boyd for bringing it forward. As she stated, there is many, many ways we need to address. It's not a one-stop answer to gun violence. It's insidious in our society. And I would hope that there's a time when we don't need to do this, but I don't see it in the near future. I would like to move that we make this resolution in bank.
Second.
Okay. So we've have a motion by Alderwoman Howard to move this in bank. The second is from, I missed the person seconding it.
Nineteen.
Nineteenth, that's fine. Okay. Sharita, you have that down there? Sorry. Thank you. All right. To move second that we make this resolution in bank, please make note of that. Thank you. Please proceed, Alderwoman Howard.
Yeah, that's all I have. I think we need to vote on it or.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Because that concludes Alderwoman Todd, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say that we need to use all the tools. It's a great resolution. We need to use all the tools in our toolbox. Some according to media watch. The media plays a major role with the violence that many people see in the media. We should educate, the, educate people about the effect of that type of violence and plus there are gangs that are violent gangs. Also, there's a lady, Penny Hiss, who wrote a book called overturning the culture of violence. We should read different books about how we can reduce violence. So we do need to use all the, and then the military. We spent seven hundred billion dollars on our, I think, seven hundred billion on our military. Sometime we use the police as to talking about reducing crime and other things, which is using, any institution that uses guns, it should be de-emphasized. And we should try to always use a nonviolent approach to solve all our problems. That should be our number one priority, conflict resolution. It should be taught in various schools, from kindergarten through high school, since we go to public schools. So it should be, it should be taught in homes, church, any institution, everywhere we go, we should teach nonviolence and conflict resolution. And I think that would also help too. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
We're done. All right, thanks. Give him some of your texts. Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. And I'm going through my screen. Alderman Davis, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things I wanted to say is that as we move forward in the summer months most especially, we should reach out and support anyone who's willing to give our young people an opportunity to be safe during the day, most especially, to have them explore and develop their minds differently and have a better cultural experience. I do know that as I continue to read about the various camp offerings and other things, it just seems as though the people who need it never know about it. And we just have to do everything we can to get the information out. And most especially, we should not turn down anybody who is willing to provide those services to our children. And even though it's out of order, I'm going to say it and I can be challenged later. To deny Velma Bailey and her camp was wrong. We need to find the money in our budget. She normally has a summer camp of about a hundred kids in Fairgrounds Park. And we need that. And we can find the money somewhere. This is sad, but we've got to do better. I thank you.
You're all mute, Mr. President.
Sorry, I had to cough. My coffee went down the wrong pipe. All right. I don't see any other hands up. If I'm missing someone, please let me know. All right. With that, you will, presentations are complete. We will now move on to line item number four.
Alderwoman Tyus has her hand up.
Okay, I didn't see it on my screen there. I apologize. Alderwoman from the first, you recognized?
Mr. President, members of the board, and so we passed the resolutions, but I did want to make a motion to pass Resolution Thirty-eight in bank.
Thirty, the one we're going through right now, thirty-seven?
Isn't thirty-eight gay pride?
Oh, I didn't see that. I'm sorry. We, we have.
That's all right. We're doing this together. We're all family today.
If you would like to, okay, so you want to, I believe we have to suspend the rules we ever adopt courtesy resolutions calendar adopted. So you'd like to recognize Resolution Thirty-eight at this point?
Yes, Mr. President, I would.
Okay. Okay, would you like it read or do you have any presentation?
No, 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 no. It's actually not mine. I just was waiting. I thought somebody was going to bring it up so I could ask for it to be in bank. But, so nobody did. Alderman Cohen, I thought you were going to do it. Where are you?
Well, that's fine. If we have a motion before us to make Resolution Thirty-eight in bank. I heard a second. Was that Alderwoman from twenty-fifth?
It was thirteen, but.
Thirteen, okay. With the mask on. All right. Okay, so with that, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
All right. Do we have any other items as we're on the courtesy resolutions calendar? No? With that, we will move on to line item four, introduction of honored guests. Anyone have any honored guests? Alderwoman from twenty-third? I think we should make note of that wonderful changes happened today. Okay. Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the twelfth? You have your hand up?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. My honored guest today is the sixteenth ward committee men's wife. So I guess, I don't know, Liz Linevey is her name, but today is her thirtieth something birthday. I won't say what. And she has been a guiding light in my pre-law studies at SLU and sort of guiding all that. And I'm remiss because yesterday we had a coffee meeting. I had no idea that she was having her birthday today. So in apology, she is my honored guest, recognizing her contributions not only as an Asian-American woman who contributes not only to our city but to our state and also one who is celebrating one of the only holidays we get for ourselves. So with that, I yield back, Mr. President, with my thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Alderwoman from the twelfth. Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, all of the business owners of soul food restaurants. This is National Soul Food Restaurant Month and we have some of the best in the country right here in St. Louis. And I'll recognize what I believe to be the longest establishment in the City of St. Louis is minority-owned, which is Diner's Delight, which is now in its fifty-fourth year of service. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Compton DeShoto, know it well.
All right.
Okay, any other, I see no other hands up? Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to approval minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognized on approval of the minutes.
I move that we adopt our minutes for, what is it? What is the date? May twenty-six? Okay.
June third.
No, it's.
From the previous Friday, which is May twenty-six.
May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. Okay. Okay, we have a second. With that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, line item six, report to city officials.
Report to city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda that's been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
Okay. Line item seven, we'll dispense with, I believe. Line item eight, we have our informal calendar. Would anyone like to take any bills off any of our informal calendars? Okay, hearing that, we will move on to line item eleven. And first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Thirty-seven sponsored by Alderman Bacaro and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Affortment except in phase four, provided relief funding and authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to, and to contract to expand such funds and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty-eight sponsored by Alderman Bacaro and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Affortment authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to expand such funds containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty-nine sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the collector revenues office pursuant to section eighty-two point six one zero revised statutes of Missouri by repealing ordinance number seven one 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 two, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. Board Bill Forty sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and ordinance amending ordinance number seven zero seven one four by amending section one, repealing section two of that ordinance enacting in lieu thereof a new section two pertaining to the same subject matters and amending section three, amending the pay metrics contained in emergency clause. Board Bill Forty-one sponsored by Alderman Howard and ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the medical examiner's office, including the compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leaves of absence, and authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number seven one 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 three, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. Board Bill Forty-two sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees of the recorder's office pursuant to section eight two point six one zero of the revised statutes of the State of Missouri by repealing ordinance number seven one one seven four, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate and containing an emergency clause and shall be effective with the start of the first pay period of the fiscal year. Board Bill Forty-three sponsored by Alderman Rice and Alderman Green and ordinance pertaining to the special use district established the South Grand Special Use District, providing definitions and findings pertaining to said district, further providing use and conditional use regulations for said district and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Forty-four sponsored by Alderman Rice and ordinance submitted to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis, a proposed amendment to the charter of the City of St. Louis enacting a new section relating to the establishment of a charter commission containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
All right, reference to committee?
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill Thirty-seven and Thirty-eight, to Public Employee Board, Bill Thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, to the HUD Committee, Board Bill Forty-three, and to Legislation Committee, Board Bill Forty-four. Mr. President? I've referenced the committee.
Oh, thank you very much. Alderwoman Rice, you have your hand up. I was just going to send you a text in regard to your message. I was going to say, I understand you're about forty-four with the goings-on of the current time. Let's go through this over the week and we can move your bill if we, you know, I always want to do things properly right now.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderwoman Spencer and you, I recognize your wishes, but let's discuss it and take care of it properly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, reference committee board bills, we've done that. At that second reading of board bills.
The following board bills were reported out of the HUD Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Two sponsored by Alderman Page and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from F, Neighborhood Commercial District, to D, Multiple Family Dwelling District and City Block six two four, so as to include the described parcel and land in City Block six two four and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty-one sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from K, Restrictive District, to J, Industrial District and City Block three, four, 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 six, zero, one, through six, zero, five, Athlon Avenue, so as to include the described parcel and land in City Block three, four, 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 and contain an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Ways and Means with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Nineteen sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to section nine four point six six zero revised statutes of Missouri pursuant to ordinance, ordinance number six, three, one, six, eight, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund directing the treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account One appropriating eleven million, one hundred and seven thousand dollars from said sales tax for the period of July first. sales tax for the period of July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three to the Bay State Development Agency for certain purposes containing a severability and emergency clause. Or Bill twenty sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Davis, and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to section nine-four-point-six-six-zero revised statutes of Missouri pursuant to ordinance number six-four-one-one-one creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund directing the treasure of the city of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account Two appropriating eleven million one hundred and seven thousand dollars from the said sales tax for a period of July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three to the Bay State Development Agency for certain purposes and contain the severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill twenty-one sponsored by Alder, Alder, I'm sorry, President Reed and Alderman Davis, and ordinance appropriating the sum of twenty-one million two hundred and nine thousand dollars as described in section nine-four-point-six-zero-zero through nine-four-point-six-five-five revised statutes of Missouri two thousand as amended for the period of July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, which sum is hereby appropriated out of Transportation Trust Fund to the Bay State Development Agency for transportation purposes and contain the severability and emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets, the, uh, Streets Committee with the due pass recommendations. Board Bill four sponsored by Alderman Rice, and ordinance recommended by the planning commission approving the name of a new street within subdivision in the city of St. Louis extended between King Highway Boulevard on the west to Shaw Boulevard on the east to be named Shaw Avenue. The extension was created during the King's Highway Bridge Improvement Project. Board Bill seven sponsored by Alderman Todd, and ordinance authorizing and directing the directive streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic on the four thousand block of West Bell Place by blocking said traffic flow at the east curb line of North Sarah Street at the intersection of West Bell Place and North Sarah Street. Board Bill eight sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance establishing a two-way stop sign at the intersection of Academy Avenue and Raymond Avenue regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Academy Avenue and Raymond Avenue and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill nine committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Todd pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four and ordinance directing the directive streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the seven hundred block of Albert Avenue, fifty-one hundred block of Cavany, Cavany Avenue, thirty-seven thirty block of Cook Avenue, forty-one hundred block of C.D. Banks, forty-four hundred block of Enright, thirty-seven hundred block of Finney, thirty-eight hundred block of Finney, five thousand block of Winerva, five thousand block of Ridge, forty-three hundred block of Washington Avenue, five thousand block of Vernon Avenue, and the fifty-one hundred block of Vernon Avenue. Board Bill thirteen sponsored by Alderman Boy pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four and ordinance directing the directive streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the forty, I'm sorry, the fifty-three hundred block of Arlington Avenue between the intersection of Arlington Avenue and Thackler Avenue, Arlington Avenue and Hornet Avenue, and on the forty-seven hundred block of Beacon Avenue between the intersection of Beacon Avenue and Frank Avenue, Beacon Avenue and Bertrand Avenue on the forty-seven hundred block of Genevieve Av- Avenue between the intersections of Genevieve Avenue and Frank Avenue and Genevieve Avenue and Bertrand Avenue. Board Bill fifteen sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and ordinance authorizing and directing the directive streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic on Maryville Avenue approximately five hundred and eighty feet south of the south curb line of Maple Avenue. Board Bill seventeen sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and ordinance authorizing and directing the directive streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic on Holdamont Trax by blocking said traffic flow at the east curb line of Hamilton Avenue at the intersection of Holdamont Trax and Hamilton Avenue and at the west curb line of Goodfella Boulevard at the intersection of Holdamont Trax and Goodfella Boulevard. That's the extent of second reading reporter standing committees.
Thank you, Sharita. Okay, line item fourteen, report of special committees.
We have none.
Line item fifteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill eighteen committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Green, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Page, Alderman Igrosia, Alderman Evans, Alderman Switzer, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Stevens, Alderman Rice, and Alderman Peel, and ordinance for the creation of a city youth council to be composed of both adults and members of the youth of the city of St. Louis for the purpose of gathering information for and making policy recommendations to the mayor and the board of aldermen concerning the state of children and the youth of the city of St. Louis. That's the extent of, extent of the perfection consent calendar.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do I need to move to adopt a perfection consent? Pardon me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oliver from the nineteenth, uh, you're recognized who, on the perfection consent calendar.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I move to adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. We will dispense with line items sixteen through eighteen. And we have already done our cursory resolutions calendar. First ring of resolutions.
Resolution thirty-nine sponsored by Alderman Tyus, handling of nuisance complaints in North City.
Oliver from the first, you're recognized on resolution thirty-nine.
Mr. President, members of the board, I request that resolution thirty-nine be sent to the Public Safety Committee.
So noted, Sharita. Okay. Then we will go to, uh, resolution forty.
Um, resolution forty sponsored by Alderman Tyus, investigating the merits of proposition or.
Oliver from the first, you're recognized on prop, on, uh, resolution forty.
Mr. President, members of the board, I request that resolution forty be sent to the legislative committee.
Thank you.
Let me on your committee and I'll hold the hearings.
So noted under slight protest, but thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you, uh, you have to take a motion and a vote to send those, uh,
Point of order video.
And also the previous one. I don't know why my video is going in and out.
Okay. Thank you very much, my, my error. Uh, so we'll go back to resolution thirty-nine. It's been assigned to public safety. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't have a second on that.
I'm sorry. We'll go to, uh, line item, uh, resolution thirty-nine. I entertain a second to move it to public safety.
Second.
Second by the Oliver from the fourteenth and a few others. Now, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving to resolution forty, uh, I'll entertain a second to move that to legislation.
Second.
And, and second by Oliver, fourteenth. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll go to resolution forty-one. Oliver from the first, you were recognized.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of board. I'd ask that resolution forty-one be read. Um, this is very important to me. I'm, I guess the only person that was on this board when we actually gave money to the Rams, we built the stadium, um, and, um, so this is important that we know what's going on with this money that's coming in. Um, I talked to both the president of board and the comptroller, neither of them knew what was going on with the money. Um, there are some people who tend to think that their money is gonna be tried to be funded without going through the board of aldermen. It's very important that we, as, uh, the members of legislation, fund any kind of funds that come this way. So we do need to know what's going on, and I'd ask that you read the res- the clerk would read the resolution, please.
Sharita, please proceed.
Give me just a second, I'm pulling it up now.
No worries, thank you. Oliver woman, we, our ties will be sending this to committee. Are you gonna be asking for unanimous consent today, or?
Uh, and so I was kinda unsure. I was gonna try to send it to your committee, but I, I already sent one, so I didn't wanna be in trouble. I hadn't talked to you. I could ask for unanimous consent, but I don't have a problem when people, uh, ask the questions of being in committee, but I don't want the chair to be mad at me, that's.
Never.
Uh, we can send it to Ways and Means, maybe if the chair from the nineteenth. Oh, are you still doing the budget?
Well, we'll be done with the budget in about another week.
So could we send it to Ways and Means, Madam Chair?
I have no problems.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. We'll get to that after Sharita reads it. Just give her a chance, pull it up. Uh, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please proceed, thank you.
Resolution forty-one on the Rams settlement. Report from the city councillor and other, and others regarding NFL payment of seven hundred and ninety million dollars to city, county, regional convention and sports complex and the potential division of, of the funds. Whereas in nineteen ninety-one, city of St. Louis, St. Louis County, and the regional convention and sports complex authority signed a contract to build a convention center stadium complex in downtown St. Louis City, which was to be owned by the regional convention and sports complex authority and paid for by the St. Louis City and St. Louis County. The complex was to be built so that the St. Louis Regional could attract a professional football team. And whereas in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, the city of St. Louis met with then-majority majority Rams owner, Georgia Cronkier, and signed a historic co- agreement to have the Los Angeles Rams move to the city of St. Louis. In nineteen ninety-five, the Rams moved from Anaheim to St. Louis, whereas for years the Rams played football before adoring and loying and loyal fans from the St. Louis metropolitan area. The Rams last game played in the city of St. Louis was December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, after which they moved to California while St. Louis attempted several methods to keep the Rams in St. Louis. And whereas, in April two thousand and seventeen, a lawsuit was filed by St. Louis City, St. Louis County, and the St. Louis Regional Convention and Sports Complex Authority against the National Football League. Whereas the fifty-two page, two hun- I'm sorry, twenty-seventeen lawsuit claims NFL team owners broke their own rules established decades ago to avoid antitrust liability and lied about the French, the franchise's departure from St. Louis. The suit also alleges breach of contract, unjust, unjust enrichment, fraud, misrepresentation, and torturous interference with business expect- expectancy. The complaint sites allege efforts to downplay Quan- Quankey's purchase of land in Inglewood, the site of the team's current stadium, while stringing along the city county and R.C.S.C.A. about staying in St. Louis. And whereas complaints sought drag damages and billions for expenses incurred in their good faith effort to keep the Rams in the city of St. Louis and share the Rams' enhanced value resulting from relocation. And whereas on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, city of St. Louis, city Ca- St. Louis County, and the regional convention sports complex agreed to seven hundred and ninety million dollar settlement with percent plus identified going to the St. Louis law firms, Dow Bennett L.L.P., Blitz, Bargat, and Douche Dauch. And whereas on December twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, city of Sa- St. Louis City, St. Louis County, and the regional convention sports complex authorities signed a seven hundred and ninety million dollar settlement agreement with the Rams owner, Stan Cronkie, and the National Football League. Whereas after attorney fees, the city and county and stadium would share about five hundred and fourteen million dollars. All three groups must still decide how, how to divide the money. And whereas since the be, since the signing of the deal, the legislative branch of the city government, which has allocated city use and spending of said funds through board bill, has not been apprised regarding the settlement agreement or any potent, potential division of said funds. And whereas it is the best financial interest of the city of St. Louis that the members of the Honorable Board of Aldermen be immediately apprised by the city councillor and other involved in this historic seven hundred and ninety million dollar settlement agreement with the Rams owner Stan Cronkie and the National Football League regarding the settlement and the potential division of the settlement so the members can begin to plan the best way to allocate said funds in expeditious manner in a way that best serves the city of St. Louis. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Aldermen pursuant to Board Rule seventeen, sorry, it cut off. I'm sorry, give me just a second, it had cut off the. It, okay. Now therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Aldermen pursuant to Board Rule seventeen entitled special committee hereby authorizes the president of the Board of Aldermen to appoint a special committee to investigate and receive a report from the city councillor and all other involved with the seven hundred and ninety million dollar agreement between the Rams and the St. Stan Cronkie and the NFL and the city of St. Louis, St. Louis County, and the regional convention and sports complex authority. The special committee shall expressly have the power to subpoena witnesses and the order of production of books and papers. Introduced this third day of June, twenty-twenty-two by the honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderman of the first ward.
All right, thank you, Sharita, very much. Oliver Tyus, anything to add to that? We have a couple of hands up. If you'd like to. I believe you're, you're muted still, Oliver.
No, I'm not muted. I was letting you finish. I was not interrupting, okay? When you've been married a long time, you know how to do these things. Okay, um, no, I was just gonna, uh, renew, uh, renew my motion to send it to Ways and Means, but I, if people have questions, I have.
Yeah, we have, uh, Oliver from the twelfth, you had your hand up first.
Yes, hello, thank you, Mr. Mr. President. I was wondering if the Alderwoman from the first would be willing to yield for just one quick question?
Oliver from the first, will you yield? Oliver from the twelfth?
Yes, Mr. President, I will.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, and apologies for the slight delay here, St. Louis City Public Wi-Fi, right? Um, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman of the first, would you be willing to entertain sending it? And I guess this is also a question for the Alderwoman of the nineteenth, but having a joint hearing between Ways and Means and also Convention Tourism, Arts and Humanities? Or would you like to keep it solely with Ways and Means?
Uh, first of all, did you talk to the Alderman from the ninth? I believe he is the chair of convention and tourism, so I don't usually try to do things without talking to the chairs so that I can get my board bills through their committee if I ever need things done. Um, so.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I, I do appreciate that. Uh, I have spoken with the chair and myself, I'm the, the vice chair of Convention Tourism, Arts and Humanities, so, um, to a degree, I suppose this is a request as vice chair that if you are willing, and if the Alderwoman of the nineteenth, if Madam Ways and Means is, uh, is willing, that we host a joint, uh, joint hearing. And we can send it to Ways and Means, but I'd like Convention Tourism, Arts and Humanities to be, uh, jointly looked into that with your consent.
Um, it's up to the two chairs of the committee. I am just a sponsor of a bill. If Alderwoman from the, uh, nineteenth and Alderman from the ninth, so wish and desire, I'm fine with that, but it's.
Why don't we, why, why, if Alderman's from the twelfth, if you're found that, let me, uh, we'll go to Alderman from the ninth, as he is the chair of that committee, we'll try and re- bring resolution to this resolution.
I appreciate that, Mr. President.
Oliver from the ninth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I was just gonna follow up with what the Alderwoman from the twelfth said. Uh, I believe that, uh, being as that is, uh, to do with the conventions, uh, tourism, I believe it should go to that committee. Um, so I would be happy to have a joint hearing if it would like to have, uh, conventions, tourism, and, uh, Ways and Means, that would be fine with me. Uh, or if the, uh, Alderman, Alderwoman from the first, uh, would be willing to, um, give a, another hearing for convention and tourism. Uh, I think that's an appropriate place for this. I think that's an appropriate place for this discussion, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman, Alderman from the nineteenth, any problem with sharing committees on this hearing?
Mr. Vice President, I have no problems having a joint hearing, but what I will suggest to you is I will chair the overall meeting.
I believe, I believe that would be proper, that would be correct.
Because this is a budgetary item about appropriating funds. It has nothing to do with the convention center. That is a lawsuit that is over and done with, and it's not appropriating money to the convention center for any of the purposes that they serve. This is about appropriating funds, as we do as a Board of Aldermen, towards expenditures for the city of St. Louis via our budgets and other tools and knowing and giving information to the public in the right way, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you very much, so what we will do, I believe, is we will share this, but the Ways and Means Committee will be in, in charge of the, the handling of the bill. With that, I guess, Alderman from the first, you would renew your motion to send this to joint committees?
Yes, Mr. President, I renew my motion. We need a second.
Okay, we have a second from the fourth and the fourteenth, I believe. At that point, all in favor, say aye.
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 You have no opposition, the eyes have it. Thank you very much, Resolution forty-two. I believe you are the main sponsor, Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Oh, I got up in the middle of the night and I just wrote resolutions, okay?
No worries.
And members of the board, Resolution forty-two is renewing the subpoena power that we had last time, we didn't have to use it. It seems that sometimes, if, and I won't use the term that I was going to use because of all the shootings, but if you have some power behind making people answer your questions, you don't have to subpoena them. But in the past, we've had problems with people who don't want to answer questions. In fact, right now, in the street department, I have a problem with somebody who does not want to answer questions, and it's under the streets purview. So I did re-issue the subpoena power authority for the committees, I sent an email out to people saying if they did not want their committee in the, in this resolution, that they could take it out or let me know. And so I am seeking unanimous consent.
Okay, there's very request, but we have a hand up before we proceed, Alderman from the fourteenth.
May I speak, ask a question of the Alderwoman from the first, Mr.?
Alderman from the first, will you yield the questions to me, Alderman from the fourteenth?
Yes, Mr. President, I sure will.
Alderwoman from the first, you did send out a, a poll. I responded, but my name's not on here, must be an oversight.
No, I thought I, didn't I send you back a response?
Yeah, you did, but my name is on here.
Okay, okay, so I can only do those things in the middle of the night, please add Alderwoman, Kara Howard's name. Is your, is your committee in there?
Uh, I thought you. Yes, Neighborhood Development, but I.
Okay, please put her name on there, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I woke up at three o'clock in the morning and I just started writing resolutions, okay?
That's what sleepwalking to do.
All right, order, order, order.
Revelations.
All right, so we're adding Alderman from the fourteenth to that, I believe that the Legislature Committee is in there, is it not? I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I thought so, thank you very much. Okay, we've had a request for unanimous consent. Do I hear any opposition? Hearing none, we will then adopt the motion of the Alderwoman from the first for Resolution forty-two.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to pass Resolution forty-two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the eyes have it. At this point, we will move to second reading of resolutions, committees' reports and adoptions.
Resolution.
Go ahead.
Resolution nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Zelp Creek Properties LLC, in the city of St. Louis, in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
All right, thank you, Resolution nineteen, Alderman from twenty-second, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of Resolution nineteen.
Entertain a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, that was. Okay, Alderman from twenty-second, Alderman from twenty-second, please proceed.
Um, I'll be open for questions right now.
I have a hand up, Alderman from the sixth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move Resolution nineteen back to committee.
Back to.
Second.
Okay, there has been a move to move Resolution back to committee. We'll take a roll call, vote on that, Sharita, please call the roll.
Debate, debate.
Uh, we've had a motion and second. I believe we have to proceed, am I correct, or not any rules personally?
No, we can debate the motion, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, okay, at that point, Alderman from twenty-second, you're recognized.
Yes, I certainly understand what some of my colleagues are trying to do, but this would be an unjust move because this company has done nothing wrong. Everything has been done in decent and in order, there is absolutely no reason to send this back to committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Alderman from the first, you have your hand up.
Mr. President, members of the board, Alderman Boyd, you know who I am about innocent until proven guilty, I'm dead with everybody. Even the people I don't like. But I do, I would maybe suggest that maybe you put it on the informal calendar for at least of this period, so that we can kind of look at it and people can feel comfortable, I hear what you're saying, and I still believe in anybody who's talked to me about what has happened yesterday, got a innocent until proven guilty speech from me. But right now, I just think that if we don't, I don't have to, have to put it back to the committee, but I think we could take a timeout and put it on a formal calendar, and that's just my question, or comment.
All right, thank you. Mr. President, please place Resolution nineteen on.
Okay, we will have to remove, we'll have to remove the second and your motion to do that, I believe.
No, you don't, because he can put it in.
All right, thank you very much.
Your bill anytime you want to.
All right, thank you very much, we had a hand up, but I saw the hands go down, there's been a request by Alderman twenty-second to move to see a formal calendar, Sharita, please make note of that. Okay.
End of second reading, report of resolution standing committee.
All right, thank you very much, we move to line item twenty-two, miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Saturday, June fourth, twenty twenty-two, Ways and Means will have a meeting at ten AM via webinar. Monday, June sixth, twenty twenty-two, Ways and Means will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Tuesday, June seventh, Ways and Means will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Neighborhood Development will have a meet at eleven AM via webinar. N C, June eighth, twenty twenty-two, Streets will have a meet at ten AM via webinar. Public Safety will have a meet at one PM via webinar. Thursday, June ninth, twenty twenty-two, Streets will have a meet at ten AM via webinar. And Friday, June tenth, twenty twenty-two, we'll board meeting ten AM via chambers.
All right, in regard to that, depending upon the cleansing of the chambers and the COVID status, we will keep June tenth meeting in a state of flux currently, if, I know there's been very many concerns been raised about the COVID concern, so we will, as they say, watch your bat channel, and we'll, we'll keep your prize on where we're going to be meeting next Friday. Any other announcements, we have a hand up, Alderman from the first?
I'm, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm going to ask somebody to call a personnel committee, because I think the reason we haven't had our chambers cleaned is because we, we talked about doing it, but then we didn't authorize the money. So we need to, as soon as possible, you or the President, will call a personnel committee, so we can get this money into the hopper, so we can get our chambers cleaned up properly and buy the air filtrations and the things that we said we were going to do.
All right, so noted, thank you. Alderman from the fourteenth, you have your hand up.
I would just like to make an announcement and welcome NASCAR this weekend. We have one of the biggest, as a, as a wife of a farmer gearhead, this is one of the biggest things the city has had come to it in, in quite some time, and we will realize a whole lot of money, whether you are a NASCAR fan or not, but I want to commend the city fathers for what they've done to bring this race to our city and the attention, national and international attention it's brought, and hopefully, it'll be an ongoing annual event. If you got the, if you can attend, if you don't have tickets, you're not going to get in now, but I think we, as the Board of Aldermen, ought to welcome the NASCAR fans to our city, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the thirteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board, and thank you so much for presiding today over the meeting. My announcement is that this Sunday in Crandall Park, the Crandall Park Concert Series resumes and runs most of the summer, starts at five PM. Great time, great for families, hope to see y'all there, thanks so much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the, who is next, we have Alderman from the fifth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to let everyone know that they are cordially invited to participate in the St. Louis Place Historic District House Tour and Art Show. It will take place tomorrow, Saturday, June the fourth, ten AM to four PM. The houses on the tour are located on a part of St. Louis Avenue formerly known as Millionaires Road. The tour will start at twenty-two oh five St. Louis Avenue, come one, come all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay, Alderman from twenty-sixth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to invite everyone to Sodan High School in the twenty-sixth ward tomorrow, nine eighteen Union. It will be the first annual Willie Davis Foundation Coaches Versus Crime Tournament, there'll be games starting at noon, and games continuing all day, and it's going to be DJed by our very own DJ Cut, so he's coming back in town to represent for this event. So again, this is a good community building, relationship building event. Tomorrow, Coaches Versus Crime at Sodan High School, if you need more information, you can call Khalil at three one four four five six seventeen ninety, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Okay, Alderman from the eighth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I wanted to invite folks out, there is a rally, a wear orange rally tomorrow at one PM at Keener Plaza. And the Moms Demand Every Town Action or Network for, for gun safety and an action here is having a rally. It's just been organized here in the last few days, so would greatly appreciate support if folks can come out, wear orange if you have it. So one PM at Keener Plaza, and then advance notice for a really cool event that's happening in Tower Grove Park next Sunday, the twelfth, at one PM. Celebrating their one hundred and fiftieth year, they're doing a Love in the Park event. So anyone who's ever been on a date in the park, or gotten married in the park, or had part of their romantic story happen in Tower Grove Park, you're, you're welcome to come. And they're doing a public ceremonial vow renewal service at one PM, complete with a first dance and a flower toss. And there's, it's, it's all about how many, how many people have had such great experiences with their, with their partners here in the park. So if you, if that applies to you, please come out and join in the love celebration, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Okay, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do want to kind of coordinate with the clerk here, I need to have a Transportation and Commerce Committee hearing next week. I was hoping to have it June eighth, I heard that there is a committee hearing for, I believe, ten o'clock that morning.
Yes, there's streets at ten.
Madam Clerk, would it be possible to have a Transportation and Commerce Committee hearing at nine? If not, I can do it at either three or four. That wins.
We can put you down tentatively, and I'll talk with the clerk, so nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock, Wednesday, June eighth.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Alderman, thank you, Sharita. We have Alderwoman from the second, Alderman Middlebrook, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I would just like to congratulate all the graduates, and especially my little ones that are moving up. I got Cameron going to the eighth grade, and Cree, she is moving from Head Start to S L P S pre-K, so I am so happy for the both of them. And also, I would like to congratulate St. Louis's own Jason Tatum for making it to the NBA Finals, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Alderman from twenty-second, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to call a HUD's hearing for Tuesday at nine AM to hear Board Bill thirty-six.
Sharita, please make note of that.
We, I'm sorry, Alderman, we have Tuesday, you said Tuesday, June seventh, we have a Ways and Means at nine AM.
Okay. Let's try one PM.
Okay, one PM?
Yes.
Got it.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I see no other hands up, I can tell NASCAR is in town because Bush beer sales have been up the past couple of days, so it's always good for everyone everywhere. Okay, with that, we will move to line item twenty-four, Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized on the excused motion.
President today.
All in, present, wonderful, thank you very much. Alderman from the nineteenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Oh, Mr. Vice President, members of.
I, but let's go back to Alderman from the twenty-fourth, I believe we had to take a voice voter on the excuse. All in, present, so we, I don't believe we need a voice vote, do we? Okay, thank you. Pardon my interruption, please proceed, Alderwoman.
It's okay, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, I move that we adjourn until next Friday, which is June tenth. And we, at ten AM, thank you.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, with that.
Alst.
I was waiting for that, thank you very much. All right, I thank you all for today, let's proceed and, and get through all this together, I appreciate all your help, and I'll get with you in regards to some of the things we talked about earlier, as far as the number forty-four, we'll stay till Monday if we can. Alderman Spencer and Alderman Rice, thank you very much. With that, meeting adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Be safe out there.
Have a safe weekend.